Good evening, everybody. It is 5:30 on March 22. We are here for our school board meeting. We are doing a study session tonight. And first on the agenda, I am going to do roll call. Director Decker.
I am here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Sproll.
Here.
And Director Zavala.
Yeah.
And I am also here, so we are all present. I am going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Snell, to present our agenda for the evening.
Thank you, Director Barrows. Thank you, Board, for being here in our study session on what is a really beautiful spring day, right? Like, it's, the sunshine is out, the trees are starting to bloom. And so, we're grateful that you take the time to be with us tonight and our guests as well. So, I will walk through and then make some introductions about some of the content that we have tonight. We are going to talk related to our student learning goals, PLC projects, so professional learning communities. We're going to get an update on the work related to that. And then, we're also going to talk a little bit about the equity policy implementation. So, in February, we approved the policy. Now, we're working on those procedures and want to check in with you tonight on some of the ideas we have around that to get feedback and to understand questions that you might have related to that so that we can better plan for next year as we implement this. So, also, I have a short superintendent report with my obligatory one slide. I'm moving it down to one slide right now. As we discussed last week, so far, the mask optional requirement has been going well in our schools. We have some students and staff that are wearing their masks and some that are choosing not to. And overall, just individuals are doing a great job with that and respecting each other's decisions. So, always know that when you have over 20,000 students and 3,000 employees, there's going to be some bumps along the way, but we're working through those and really grateful for our community's support around this. The indicators continue to trend in a positive direction, well, in a direction that we would like to see. Sometimes positive means more and we don't want more. But, and then also, you know, we're continuing our regular updates with public health. And I'm sure that we're seeing, you know, rumors of potential other variants and how that plays out. So, we're still monitoring those, but as of right now, things are looking really well as we head into spring break. I'll pause there to see if anybody has any questions on that. Okay. Then, I wanted to talk a little about, as I mentioned, we have two deeper dives tonight in this study session. And really, all of these areas are connected, so it's hard to just separate one from another. But tonight's focus is definitely on student learning and what that process looks like from a district staff perspective. And tonight, we have many guests, but two guests are going to speak in particular about our professional learning communities project. And so, we have been involved in a state project where districts across the state are coming together for shared learning. We have a team here at the district that's leading that effort. And we feel like it's really connected to the equity policy. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Jim Gray and Carrie Van Oostren. And I will stop talking and advance slides when you request.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all and to give you an update on the WASA PLC project. It's especially an honor to co-present tonight with the President of the Vancouver Education Association, Carrie Van Oostren. Carrie's leadership, collaboration, and partnership have been instrumental in the progress that the team has made thus far. The WASA PLC project team members come from a wide range of experiences from within VPS. We have classroom, building, and district office level experience as well as we have elementary, middle, and high school representation also. These distinguished team members include Jessica McCurdy, a teacher from Roosevelt Elementary School, Keith Lloyd, teacher at Alcat Middle School, Carrie Van Oostren, as I mentioned before, Darcy Frum, Director of Curriculum, Matt Greco, Instructional Technology Lead, Kurt Scheidel, the Principal at Fort Vancouver High School Center for International Studies, Luke LaCount, Principal at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Kirsten Copeland, Principal at Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School, and my partners, Bill Omen and Kristi Lindholm, Executive Directors. As you're all aware, over the next three years, this team, along with the superintendent and yourselves, will be engaging in a statewide professional learning project. The end goal being to put systems and processes in place to ensure equity and high levels of learning for all students by implementing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, creating timely, a timely and balanced assessment system district-wide, removing a time, creating a timely and balanced assessment system, excuse me, system district-wide, I said that every once, removing barriers by implementing additional time, support, and extensions for all students, addressing equity issues through standards-based reporting and grading practices district-wide, building an inclusive and healthy district and school culture, operationalizing the concepts and practices of a professional learning community from the boardroom to the classroom. Our North Star in this work is the newly passed VPS Equity Policy 010. As you can see, our equity policy references, language references educational outcomes, student learning, academic supports, deployment of resources, progress monitoring, and evidence-based instructional practices. Professional learning communities are one of the vehicles we will lean on heavily to fulfill the promise of our North Star. Next slide, please. Why PLCs? The collaborative process at the core of the professional learning community is research-based. Collective teacher efficacy has been proven to be the most powerful tool to impact student academic growth. Our belief as a staff that all students can learn at high levels drives us in this process. Additionally, PLCs is job embedded, relevant, and targeted professional development for teachers. Who better to learn from as a teacher than from my peers? By ensuring the most highly trained and capable educators are collaborating using data, students are provided the most relevant and rigorous learning experiences possible. Finally, PLCs provide for intervention and extension for students. This means individual student needs are a driving force in this process. Students are provided with, provided with what they need based on data. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Jim. And thank you to the Board for the opportunity to share our joint investment in rebooting the PLC experience. I know that Jim helped reinforce why we've engaged in the PLC process previously, and those still remain true and important for consideration moving forward. But I think based on this shared learning experience, we're interested in rebooting and kind of re-engaging with some intentionality behind it as well. We've seen a lot of good and great work around the PLC process over the 10-plus years that I've been an educator in VPS, both at the elementary and middle school level. And I do want to encourage folks that student learning is still at the heart and center of this work. But through some of our shared learning this year as a part of the PLC project, it's really helped hit home that it's also an opportunity for professional learning for the educators in our system, access to differentiated training around the PLC process, but also engaging in the PLC process with the goal of growing as a professional as we analyze student data, make adjustments to our instruction, collaborate with colleagues to find what's best fit for student needs that we've identified. And really, as we engage in that professional growth process, the goal is that we shift into living the PLC process as opposed to doing it, which I think has been kind of a variation that we've seen over time based on direct experience. So, before we can have full commitment into living the PLC process, another kind of turning point for us in this re-engagement work has clarified that it's not just work for building administrators and building-based teacher teams to engage in and go forth and conquer that will really leverage the greatest impact on students across our system when we have engagement and support at all levels of our system. Superintendent and Board contribution we're grateful for at this stage and look forward to really digging deep into what those forms of support and collaboration combined with feedback might look like. And then recognizing that district-level team, like the crew that Jim helped introduce a little bit earlier, coupled with building guiding coalitions at each work site on through the teacher team level will help this build a higher degree of consistency. It's been really meaningful to see pockets of excellence. Like I said, good and great work already taking place around the PLC process, but we know that all, each student across our system deserves the highest quality learning experience. And this is one of the ways that we can collaboratively leverage that approach. But feedback loops and an intentional way to glean perspective from boots-on-the-ground teacher teams up through the building coalition to the district-level system that Jim and I are a part of, and incorporating feedback loops up to the superintendent and board level will be important as we continue to reflect and adjust or refine this process moving forward. It's not just a matter of being informed, but also being clear on what supports we can put in place. Because if we're supporting teachers in the PLC process, they will be better equipped and capable of supporting students in their learning process. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, I'd already alluded to kind of these four tiers or levels of our school system. And as I mentioned before, we've had more of a targeted approach at the building and teacher team level and see this reboot as a, as an opportunity to leverage engagement and support at all levels of our system. There are already steps that the Board and Superintendent have engaged in, excited to be a part of this PLC project in recognition of its direct alignment with the equity policy as a mean to really hone in on consistent systems across our schools for meeting student learning needs each and every student in mind. And appreciate Dr. Snell's priority in considering this PLC project as a reboot opportunity with impacting student learning in mind as well. Our district team, I'm hoping, can serve as kind of a liaison of sorts as we hone some of those feedback loops, solicit input from building-level coalition teams and teacher teams alike so that we can provide supports and kind of reinforce consistent processes so that those teams are as successful as possible in meeting student need as well. Thank you. These five commitments are kind of a clarification where we'd like to delineate what we're most consistent in versus some of the areas that we can continue to maintain some flexibility according to student demographics and kind of building style and that dynamic as well. But the five commitments for PLC implementation really are a clear direction that we gleaned from shared time in this PLC project. And for those that are familiar with the four questions that teacher teams engage in through the inquiry cycle of PLC work, they align very closely to the team, teacher team level work they're engaged in. And we're hoping, as we plan out kind of a three- to five-year plan for rollout, we can also roll through these commitments in an intentional way. So, commitment number one of working in collaborative teams and taking collective responsibility for student learning is a primary focus with year one reboot implementation in mind. And two of the key areas that we're hoping to really focus, support, time, and energy around are supporting building sites with establishing a guiding coalition that incorporate building administrators and teacher leads from teacher teams that can, again, solicit input from teacher teams to the coalition in support of professional development needs that might be present at a building or really reviewing student data and orienting what that shared learning experience might look like with students in mind. And then, the, really, the consistency area of focus around not only establishing but maintaining a cultural collaboration, that collective responsibility, that these are our students, not my students and your students, is, is a process where, or is an aspect that we're trying to prioritize with intention and an effort to create greater consistency across our system with the student experience in mind. And then also incorporated into year one's priority are the, is the focus to implement a guaranteed and viable curriculum, something that Jim alluded to earlier. And what's really exciting is that there's been meaningful work conducted with teacher team or teacher input around identifying essential grade level and/or content standards. And so, really leveraging, leveraging some of the prior work into providing some clarity for what our primary instructional focus might be with scope and sequence in mind, again, is geared towards creating a more consistent student experience, whether they're attending at Washington Elementary, Anderson Elementary, Walnut Grove Elementary in an effort to better replicate or support consistency from a student lens. And then, the third, fourth, and fifth commitments that would still ultimately be a part of the three-to-five-year planning, but we, we haven't spent as much time or energy sussing out some of those details, still ultimately revolve around monitoring student learning and the use of common formative assessments. So, how will we know that students are reaching proficiency or demonstrating learning? And then, four, using evidence of student learning to make adjustments or ensure what we maintain moving forward from instructional practice standpoint, what's working best to meet student needs around these essential standards from an instructional standpoint? And then, item number five from our commitments would be providing systematic interventions and enrichment and really look forward to collaborating across all four levels to eliminate some of the barriers that we've encountered historically into embedding, again, a more consistent opportunity for students to receive interventions according to need and opportunities for enrichment accordingly as well.
So, what will this look like in five years? Essentially, we will be able to tie our work and outcomes directly to the equity policy goals. For instance, our student demographic data would not be a predictor of student outcomes. Our staff development would be aligned to a few initiatives that we know would result in positive outcomes for the student experience. This professional development would be relevant, ongoing, and individualized for staff to ensure maximum positive impact on students. Our system would have a seamless and continual communication and/or feedback process that would include all stakeholders to ensure all voices inform the work. And finally, our data would explicitly show high levels of student success as measured by formative and summative assessment. Excellent.
Thanks, Jim. So, there are still kind of lingering questions that are driving our work forward and a to-do list, certainly, as we've just really delved into this shared district team work over the course of the current school year. But we are shooting for a three-to-five-year plan that addresses those five commitments. I spoke to a little bit previously as kind of a driver for each level of teams from superintendent, board, all the way through teacher team levels. And the, the goal or intention is that we would establish a sequence of sorts for training and implementing around those five commitments and then how we would monitor and refine. And to Jim's point on the previous slide, narrowing the initiatives, making sure that we are intentional with narrowed focus as opposed to making a hard push to implement all aspects too quickly without sufficient planning and support in place. Some ongoing questions that we're continuing to ask as we collaborate at the district team level is how our plan addresses the hearts and minds of our educators across all levels of our system. And addressing that first before we delve deeply into implementation of systems and policies, so acknowledging that support is needed and ownership of the process is needed. And I'm really grateful for the collaborative nature of the PLC project thus far, incorporating administrative and certificated employees like Jessica, Keith, and myself, so that it doesn't need to be an us versus them. It's really been presented as a unified front of how we can do best for students with different roles in mind. Another question, what does the system need in order for this work to happen at all four levels? So, we want to be diagnostic and responsive to input, and that helps further reinforce the feedback loops that we've referenced as well to continue adjusting and refining the process along the way. And then, ultimately, cultural responsiveness will be crucial in emphasizing through the collaborative processes that teacher teams engage in, the building coalition teams, certainly relevant to the work that our district team has engaged in, and then incorporating the superintendent and board with that consideration. While we want to be responsive to student need, we also want to be responsive to staff needs in this process because the better we support staff in this process, the better prepared they are to support students with intentionality and focus.
Questions for us? Great job, Carrie.
Likewise. Thanks, Jim.
And I wanted to also maybe start with Kyle because Kyle is the Board Representative, and so, she's been attending, not sessions with the team, but we have joint sessions at the Board Superintendent that we connect with other Board and Superintendent representatives from the project. So, I don't know, Kyle, you want to share any of your experiences or questions or thoughts?
Well, thank you, Carrie and Jim, for the presentation. That was great. I really, I think, over the course of the year, what I've had the opportunity to participate in is really recognizing that PLCs are going to drive our equity policy work and just the correlation there from a student learning perspective at least. And I have to say, on all of my school visits in the last few months, I've been, that's been one of my key questions asking principals. And it's been really exciting to hear the energy around PLCs. And it's been a hard year, a hard start to the year. Principals have had a lot on their plate, but they're definitely making progress. So, it's been fun to see, and I love the three-to-five-year outlook. One thing that keeps coming up to me, and this is a question, is really about, like, cross-building collaboration. And that's something, just, I know time is a premium for teachers and in our PLC meetings with 40 minutes, like, is that a realistic goal that we can get to to make sure that those learning standards are consistent district-wide?
I think that's a great question. And in our conversations as the, kind of the district guiding coalition team, that comes up a lot in how do we identify and then communicate out essential standards across the system? So, a Roosevelt Elementary and a Salmon Creek don't have different variations of essential standards, and then you also have to vertically align them, you know, K through 5, as an example. So, having a system that's really created at the district coalition level to, to kind of create them, bring them to some kind of a central communication body, and then decide on them and get them back out, is going to be essential to some of this work. So, teachers are fully involved in the identification of those essential standards, and then they're consistent across the system. Carrie, anything you want to add?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I think, to your point, Kyle, related opportunities for cross-building collaboration, the essential standards work prior to where we are currently, certainly incorporated opportunity for folks across sites to come together and kind of suss out what those might look like within particular content areas and grade levels. And so, I think as we hone that process, as Jim alluded to, it's yet another opportunity for engaging folks across buildings and, again, calibrating a more consistent approach from, from an essential standards point and establishing scopes and sequences. But the second opportunity that's come through in some of our discussion is with those building guiding coalitions in mind, if there are key leaders per site that are either receiving professional development or support from the district team, that we also might be able to calibrate some of the work that's taking place at the guiding coalition level that then has potential to impact from a greater consistency standpoint per building, if that makes sense. But I do also appreciate your reference to the current structure for Monday early releases and more formally scheduled opportunities to engage in the PLC process. And some of the good and great work that's happening already is exciting to see. And then, as we continue collaborating through our three-to-five-year plan, I'm, I'm excited to see what other opportunities might present themselves as well.
Thank you. No, that's, I had the opportunity at King a few months back. I was supposed to be going into a dual-language class, but in fact, the teacher was having a PLC with all the other dual-language elementary teachers. And it was just really, it was really powerful to see that collaboration, especially supporting our schools that have fewer teachers. So, I think there's so much potential with this work. I also just want to add, I don't come to the Board with an educator background. I have a business background and I'm a parent. And to me, PLC only ever translated as, I have to pick my kids up early from school, remember it's 2:10, like, you know, that was the, and I think that there's probably opportunity to inform our parent community about the work, just, I think, what the purpose is and what the takeaways are. I think that there's probably, I learned so much this year and the power of PLCs. So, I think it, it could be a communications opportunity.
I see Director Decker has her hand raised.
Yes. So, when I was at Ogden, we did a lot of PLC work. We had, we spent the whole year talking about it, and this was a while ago. And I will tell you, I think one of the biggest difficulties you're going to have is reminding everybody that this is a three-to-five-year process, and you don't start at the end because the end is like where it's all exciting and the little snippets, and it's so hard, like, but we want to be here and just like keeping people, we can't be here until we, you'll get the hearts and minds of everybody and until we, you know, talk through some of the disagreements and some of the disconnects. And, you know, getting there is amazing. And when you see how it's worked in other school districts that have been doing it for a long time, it's, it's so inspiring. And, but it is so hard to recognize this is a long-term process in order to make sure that we're doing the right things for all of the stakeholders involved and all of our students. So, good luck with keeping everybody.
Thank you, Kathy. Other questions?
Kathy, if I could add kind of a yes and, the, the hope is to be methodical and intentional with our sequence, but we also recognize that there are pockets and sites who may be ready for next stages. So, I think our, our overall mission and focus is still to kind of calibrate the year-one implementation with what we're training and implementing before we get to the monitoring and adjusting stage, but also want to find opportunities to differentiate for teams and sites where this work is ready for maybe next stage. I don't want to overpromise by any means, but those are awarenesses we're hoping to keep in mind in the process as well.
Right.
Other questions or comments from directors?
I'm, I'm just going to jump in and just express my appreciation for the really powerful collaboration that's happening right now between the district and our labor group because there was a great line in one of the slides that I think that Carrie was presenting where you distinguish between living a PLC versus compliance with just doing the PLC. And I've, I've had experiences with really powerful, wonderful, amazing PLCs that I've worked with, and I've had experience with the compliance piece of it. And so, PLCs can be just an amazing experience for teachers and students of both. But making sure that it is a powerful experience for our teachers, and I think that having VEA as part of this process helps us ensure that it is. So, I really appreciate the work that, that's happening there between VEA and the district. And I, and the vision that you laid out is, is exciting and it's, it's, I'm just super excited to see what happens in year two and three, et cetera. But there is that, that challenge, and Carrie, I know you know what I'm talking about, about finding the balance between providing direction, giving, you know, parameters and, and guiding the work, but also allowing for teacher autonomy because that's really where the power comes from, is letting teachers be creative in their, in their solutions that they come up with. So, it's just, it's super exciting, and I just really, I'm so very grateful for VEA's participation and for the district really collaborating with VEA to make sure that it's, it's a, it's a success. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Director Smith. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, Carrie and Jim, thank you so much for representing the team. I know others are on the call too that are part of the team, and you, you took the lead in presenting today. And we, we, I get a chance to stop in with the team. I don't get a chance to stay the whole time usually, but they meet pretty regularly. And in addition to the professional learning experiences that they have through the project, they also have sessions where we are working sessions where we are working as a team onsite and getting, receiving some coaching from a, a kind of a nerd, a third party neutral stance to just kind of press on us, which is always helpful in those situations. And the time that the team is giving to is, we're really appreciative of that because they're coming out of their school day and their normal responsibilities to spend a day working on this. And so we're really grateful for their involvement and engagement. So with that, I'm going to transition us to the next part, which is very connected to the presentation tonight, the PLCs. And we're kind of almost, we went maybe more specific and focused. And now we're going to come back out a little and widen our level with this next topic. And I'm going to walk you through some slides and we're going to have a chance to, to pause and just listen to questions that may come up for you or thoughts. Anything that you want to share? And Janelle and I are, are listening as always to try to take our cue from direction from the board. But as you're aware, and maybe more for the audience tonight, these are the six goal areas that were attached, included embedded in the equity policy. And the bold letters are nice themes for each of these. So we have goal areas related to student learning, culture and climate, our, our resources, curriculum and instruction and equity blends to help with decision-making and professional staff. And so each of those goal areas is obviously important and also dependent on each other. And tonight we are, we started with a focus on student learning and how to maybe implement across our system, more consistent experiences for students and more consistent support for our staff. Now we want to go back to each of these six goal areas and just present some information of our initial thinking of how will we help a school board monitor our progress on the equity policy? Like what does that look like? We have monthly meetings, we have monthly study sessions, like how do we use our time and focus on the things that are going to leverage the most impact for our students? So tonight, as you listen and you provide feedback or in follow-up afterwards, really thinking about progress monitoring and what you would like that to look like next year. Also thinking about the structures that were built into the equity policy. So the strike, the equity policy references a district student centered equity action plan. This is where we will actually identify the goals within the goal areas. So it's not enough to say that we have a student learning goal. We need to be specific about what that looks like in year one, right? Or where are we going to major? What are we hoping to impact in year one? What does that look like in year two? Same for all those six school areas. We also have a school-based plan that also incorporates school improvement. School improvement has been a process that we're required to participate in at the state level. It's where we have set goals related to state assessments and other indicators. But we want to incorporate the, the equity work into that as well. And we have some structures like student-centered equity teams. And so Janelle and her team have supported each school to move forward from not or having a team at varying levels and really standardizing a process from a standpoint of what should teams be looking at? What should they be made? Who should be on those teams? What should be their focus? How do they work and engage the community? So those are all in our schools now and structure that we can leverage for this work. We also have, as we mentioned, the PLC project that we're working on. And then the other project that we have as a state or as a school that we're participating at the state level is the inclusive practices project. And we believe that these are vehicles to really enhance the student experience moving forward and enhance the way we support staff in that process. So the first area is student learning. And as you heard from Jim and Carrie, a focus on professional learning communities and that five-year plan. One thing that we articulated in the policy is, or moving forward in our procedures is quarterly common formative assessment cycles for key learning standards. And so what that means or could mean for us is we have already inconsistently and traditionally looked at state testing data at the board level. It's important to look at that, but I know even from our last cycle, that can be frustrating as a board director and a staff member, because you are looking at summative data behind. You're not looking at data that's in the moment and you potentially have an opportunity to leverage resources to maybe affect those outcomes. And so the common formative assessment cycles would allow us to do that at a district level. And so we might identify, let's say, ELA, English Language Arts, a key strand or set of standards across our K-12 curriculum that we want to focus on next year. And so what that would mean is we would need to identify what a formative assessment would look like. And we'd need staff input on that. And then we'd need to collect that information and then we could report that information at a board level. We might look at a math strand or something of that nature. We won't have the capacity to look at that at a board level from every essential learning standard. So we want to be thoughtful about what we choose and why we choose it. But that's a way that we could do that. So we could still look at state assessment and graduation level data, maybe at the beginning and end of the year. And then in the middle, maybe we look at formative assessment data. So that's an idea that we're thinking about. And then also with inclusionary practices, we want our students to have access to core curriculum. The experiences, every student is a general ed student first, and then they might receive other services to support them. And if they don't have access to our learning environments, the same way as their peers, then how, why would we expect them to, to, to learn at the same rates or accelerate those rates? So the inclusionary practices project is really looking at how do we support and make our learning environments more inclusive of students? And we would like to bring you into that project like we're bringing you into the PLC project. And give the board regular updates. This project, Director Barros is the board representative, similar as Director Sproll is with the PLC project. And so even yesterday, we had a meeting and Director Barros was there representing the board and participating in this project. So those are two area points of focus for student learning. And I think because we are going through each of the six goal areas, instead of doing all six and then pausing for comments and questions, I'm just going to take a pause after each slide and see, you know, are these the kinds of things that you were thinking about when the equity policy moved? When we think about implementing that? And then we'll move to the next goal area. And then at the end, we'll have time to talk, talk about all the goal areas again, if you would like. So Director Decker, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that rather than just talk. I love the idea of the, having the common, common formative assessment cycle. I think that is tremendous and I'm not a big fan of, I don't think a lot of educators are of state assessment. State assessments other than looking at a big picture, but I think, you know, looking at individuals or looking at building-wide and I just, I just feel like it leaves so much to behind on each student, doing that comment of formative, common formative assessment would be wonderful. I feel like I'd get a lot more insight into what's happening with our students. So.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying point on that? Um, I think as evidenced by this fall, this past fall's SBAs, which was some sort of amended test and students weren't even taking their grade level. And so the data is, you know, with a grain of salt, right? The common, I love the idea of the common formative assessment, but we would be determining essential standards on an annual basis, I assume. And then there'd be a cycle for reviewing that.
Yeah. That, that process is definitely an ongoing process. I think many essential learning standards stay consistent year to year. But as Jim and Carrie mentioned, that vertical and horizontal teaming, to your question, Kyle, about how do we connect across our system, there is always opportunities to talk about like, how does this learning standard fit? What, how are our students performing on this? Why are we seeing discrepancies in performance? How do we? And, and because of that, then you start to see some shifting of potential standards or ways that we're assessing or activities that we're using to provide the learning environment for students to meet that standard. So it's not like it is a, you know, wipe the chalkboard off and start over every year, but it's more like continuing to add a chapter to a story that's being written ongoing through our staff and students' experiences.
And so I, I, I think that that is very valuable and probably a really productive use of especially like these study session formats, for instance. And I would be excited for those conversations. But just clarifying, this isn't a replacement necessarily of looking at those 30,000 foot level. There's still that data that we'll be using and considering, but perhaps on our deep dives, we'll be looking more at these formative assessments. It's not an either or, it's more of a.
And each student-centered equity team at the district level and the school level has a list of data points that are really required through the equity policy. So attendance, discipline data, engagement type of data and student learning data. What we're proposing in, in the procedures to move forward is adding formative assessments that would be teacher developed through the PLC process that we would identify leverage standards that we think are really important. You know, so like, for example, we might talk about persistence and problem solving for mathematics. And we might identify one or two key standards at each grade level and have that be a theme for the year. And then we bring that data first at a state assessment level. What's that saying at a summative level from our student performance and how they're doing? And then here's how we're going to approach that. And here's some formative assessment data and what we've done with that, those results. Think about the presentation that we did last time, the ITech did related to the panorama data where they, they had their summative data. I guess the one benchmark that we've only had so far, but now they're drilling down and they're making action plans based on that. We would like to propose that similar kind of a process that would also be with academic standards that, that we would collectively say, these are really important for us as a school to, a school district system to identify and be consistent across each of our schools with. The thinking with that too, is that if you identify those power standards or essential standards and focus, you're working on a process that can be replicated up and down the system to other content areas, to other essential standards. As opposed to trying to do everything coverage-wise once, all the, it's not, as we're seeing in the project and the research, that's not a way to leverage change for students.
That makes a lot of sense. And I, I, I really like that idea. One final question, I know in historically, we looked at a district scorecard, I think two or three times a year. And I know that the data points on that scorecard is going to be up for consideration as we go through the strategic planning process. Would we find a way to incorporate these, like whatever the themes or the common form of assessments into that districts? I don't even know if we need to use the term scorecard anymore, but that I guess, whatever documentation or presentation we create to do our self-assessments.
Yes. I, I think it also depends on the standard and the level and some of that, but the equity policy and procedures are calling out maybe scorecard type data as well, that would be regularly reported in this. And then you've got this formative assessment chunk. And then you've also got the student experience, which would be panorama or other indicators that we think would be important. Some of those might be really easy on a, on a scorecard to like, kind of look at it on a table and say, look at the progress we're making on self-advocacy or something like that on the social emotional side. And others might need more of a qualitative approach of like telling the story of this data, like what is, so we, here we have a student that performed at this level on an academic assessment, performed at this level in a performance-based assessment and is telling us this in their social emotional experience, like how do we tell that story? And what does that student need moving forward? Do they got what they need or, or do we need to think differently about that? So I think we're at a really exciting time with data and, and this policy and what you're asking for at a board. And also the fact that you talked about annually reviewing the policy. So what we present next year and what we do next year really probably shouldn't be what's two years from now or three years from now, because we should probably inform our work as we go.
No, I, I love all of this. And I think it adds so much more dimension to these type of data reviews. I'm just thinking about patrons and community members who might want access to some sort of structure or form that they can assess the date, the district, because not everyone's going to want to listen or watch all of our study sessions. So having some tool that's available that is somewhat consistent from year to year, but maybe making that a little bit more dimensional with the data we're presenting.
It's a great, great feedback. Should I move, move along to the next goal area?
Sorry.
No, this is, this is exactly what we're asking for. So with each, each one, we want to understand what you're thinking. So the next goal area is around culture and climate. And what, what we're proposing is to really anchor in student voice. Obviously you've heard presentations from our student advisory team. We're also going to have an expectation that each school has some sort of student advisory team. Is some way of collecting feedback from students. We want to continue to look at the panorama survey information and give you an opportunity at the board level to do a deeper dive related to what it looks like at the school level, like we saw in our last meeting. We are going to continue senior exit interviews. Again, this year, because of just the pandemic and the challenge that we have with substitutes, we're going to do a sample size of senior exit interviews, again, a representative sample, instead of trying to interview all seniors because of the need it would take for substitute teachers. And we don't want to interfere with the, the regular school experience that we're trying to provide. And then another focus on staff training and support. So just thinking about the experience. I think Carrie articulated well that if we're supporting and providing and meeting the needs of our staff, then and we have a culture in a workplace that's around student-focused experiences, then you know, we're all going to benefit from that. So thinking about the training that we've done this year and how do we expand upon that? Our areas of focus for us. So this is what we're thinking related to culture and climate in year one of the equity policy. I'm going to keep us moving and you just stopped me anytime.
I have a question about this. Just because I know the panorama survey gives us such good information on students and their sense of belonging and kind of the, the climate that they are in, is there any type of, because this focuses on student and staff sense of belonging. Is there any type of, I guess, tool to use to like a, something like the panorama survey or something to measure kind of staff sense of belonging and kind of where where staff are sitting in terms of just the climate that they feel within the building?
Great question, Tracy. We, we have existing staff surveys, which I, we feel like are useful at some level, but certainly this experience with panorama and the level of detail that they're providing is, is more robust than our former student and staff surveys. So there could be opportunities to expand that. Some other things too, that, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to kind of make too long of a list here, but being very intentional about our staff connects. And so moving from a situation where we only had staff meetings at the school level to having staff meetings and opportunities to engage with staff there and at the district level and using some tools like thought exchange to understand what are on people's minds and then trying to address it in the staff connects. So I, I would say yes, and opportunities, I think that we could continue to expand to get staff voice on this. Just thinking about our focus for next year at the board level in terms of the kinds of information we bring to you in the six goal areas. This is where we were thinking initially and, and that's where we would love feedback for you. So if like, you might say, well, maybe the staff training feedback would be a point to understand where people, where, where people are at as staff members. And so you would like us to bring some data related to staff training, exit interviews or post-experience surveys or things of that nature, that could be something as well. This is kind of our initial conversation too. So part of this is like, I would, I would want you to kind of ruminate on this a little bit and then come back to us because in August, we would actually adopt a, like this is our progress monitoring schedule, right? And in each of the six goal areas, these are the one or two indicators. If we have like six indicators in each six goal areas, you can, like, we're going to have to make some prioritization decisions. Cause otherwise we'll be counting too much stuff and it won't have the significance at the district level that I think that you're asking for with this policy. The resources area is really thinking about the way we make decisions. The resources area is really thinking about the way we make decisions, honestly, in, in a district. Because, I mean, most of my job as talking today in a meeting is to try to filter through problems that arise and try to distribute resources to address those problems. And when you're as a system this large, there's a lot of opportunities to do that work. And so how do you do that consistently? Ensuring that all of our students have access and that our programming is whatever standard level we want for each student, that that can be found in each of our schools. And if not, then articulating why that's the case and what, what's, what's the trade off here? So one of the things, and, and the thing that, you know, I joked about six goals and six indicators. Some of these don't have like six indicators. So this would be more of like our budget adoption process, right? And Kyle and Wendy, Director Sproll and Director Smith are on our budget committee and we're reviewing processes with them for how do we make decisions about this? So those indicators might present themselves in different ways than as a scorecard or something like that. I've linked in this on hyperlinked to the equity lens, which will be in a future slide. And I think these two are really closely connected. The next area is around curriculum and evidence based instruction. And one of the things that you heard Jim and Gary talk about was a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And it goes back to the question that Director Sproll had about, you know, what do these assessments look like? What are, what are the standards? How do we make the decisions around the standards? And so really trying to have some goals related to that for next year. So it could be linked back to the common formative assessment. So we understand we want a guaranteed and viable curriculum for pre-K to 12 and we want it for all content areas, but where are we starting, right? And where are we going to ensure that the progress is moving forward with that? And then I, I quoted this, this phrase, windows and mirrors. You'll see this used a lot with curriculum that the research talks about when students can see themselves in the curriculum, like they are more connected to that. So if you read a story and in some ways you can make a personal connection to the text and that's a strategy that teachers will talk about when they're teaching literacy. If you can make that personal connection, then you're just vested as a learner more than if you can't. And so if our curriculum is only representing one kind of story, then maybe only one set of students see themselves in that story. And so you really want diversity in the curriculum so that as a student, you say, hey, I, I can connect with that, right? That's, that's like some of the stories that we tell at home or that's my experience because my brother's in a wheelchair and I see a book with a, with a student in a wheelchair. Those are opportunities for mirrors, like you're seeing yourself in the curriculum. The other piece that we think is really important is windows into other people's experiences. So just because I'm not in a wheelchair, I can read a story about someone in a wheelchair and then I have some empathy for that. And so those are goal areas as well. And this year, we've spent some time just talking about the instructional materials process and we shared with you like our health curriculum and moving that online so people can see what the curriculum is. We want to continue to make progress in that. And so you might see a goal related to, we're going to review our novel collection, right? And we're going to look at that with a windows and mirrors lens. And we're going to look to expand that. So the, the goal areas might look a little different in this. On the instruction side of things, I think that goes back to the K-12 staff training component. And so what are we learning about our instruction and how can we improve? And of course, on another slide, you're going to see this, but we have a huge opportunity with Vida next year as a lab school, so. So this is the equity lens. I'm sorry, this has a lot of text. But these are the questions that are in the procedures right now that as we're working through, we're trying to figure out, okay, if we're making decisions, how do we do that thoughtfully and considering each of the students that we serve? And so the first area is thinking about groups of students and who might or may not be affected by this decision and why or why not? And then also thinking about unintended effects on, on students. And even though we think this is a really great idea, like, let's really process through this and how does this affect other students that may not be the, the primary focus of the initial decision? What about where we're at with disparities and our progress towards minimizing those disparities across our system? How, how have we engaged stakeholders? So at our superintendent transition team meeting this week, Director Decker and Director Zavala were there and we were doing an after action review of the equity policy. And so Janelle presented, like, this is the plan that we had. This is how we tried to engage people. This is the data points around that. And here's some opportunities, maybe that we could do things differently next time or we could expand in a different way. And we're really trying to leverage that transition team to help us think about what does stakeholder engagement look like in the future? And so that's a really important consideration. And then finally, are there barriers to moving forward? So of course I've summarized those, but what we would like to see these do is to become a part of our regular decision making process now. Like every, like I'm making a decision right now on what content to share with you and, and what content to move forward or when to ask for more questions and not. Now, I don't like, every single time, I'm not going to go through five questions and slow down the process so much that we can't move as a system. But there are definitely key points of decision making that we want to engage more stakeholders and we want to think about programming and all those considerations. So now when I do that, like through our after action review, that is going to change my filter as I make decisions in the moment as well because I've been processing through these questions all the time. So we, we feel like this is a huge opportunity for us and one that we can be really transparent on how we're making decisions across our system, so. Pause in, but again, this isn't one necessarily that has the same kind of indicators that like student learning might have. So I believe that this is the last school area.
Can I just?
Oh, go ahead, Kyle.
So I, I mean, one insight, I, I remember when we established that goal and I'm thinking, how would you ever articulate an equity lens? So great work to Janelle and team. But I just wonder if that's something that should particularly be highlighted in our annual review? Just because I feel like this is an area where there's probably going to be the most learning is how we really create that lens going forward.
Great suggestion.
Right now, I just imagine that will, our thoughts on it will evolve each year.
I think I'm at the last school area. And this is around professional staff. And again, we'll see the PD, professional development and coaching in here. And then as a reference, like the opportunity that we have for our second to fifth grade students and staff to have this shared experience and that focus on professional learning is, is one that we don't want to miss. And so really kind of concentrating on that as a particular goal area next year and informing the board on what, what that looks like and what we're learning about that process is really important. And then through the equity policy and procedures, we've talked about making sure that our staff, we move in a direction where our staff are reflecting the demographics of the students they serve. And so having some recruitment and retention goals associated with this goal area would be important. And so those are the areas that we're thinking of bringing forward to you related to this goal. I'm going to pause and Janelle is on the call as well. And just, Janelle, if there's anything that you would like to emphasize or places that you could give some insight into the process or where we're at. I know the board would welcome those comments.
Yeah, I would just, I just, one of the things that I heard you say is Janelle and team, but I just want to emphasize that this was a collaborative effort. Directors Vala, Director Decker and Mary Lee and Jeff. I mean, the executive directors, everyone was highly engaged in this work. We have Director Barros and Smith, who, as well as Sprow, who participated in our equity advisory or discipline equity committee meetings. And so everyone's been highly engaged in this work. And so I just wanted to make sure that our community knows that, that these goals reflect the feedback that we received from the process the last year and a half.
Thank you, Janelle. And just open it up for any other questions or thoughts or feedback. Our cycle on this is we have the spring retreat coming up at late April. So we would love to spend a little time on this in April and then take your direction, use the summer, things to plan. And then, as you know, August is a huge PD time for us, professional development time. And then we have our board retreat where we finalize the goals and indicators for the year. So we're just kind of working backwards from that August retreat date. So the other piece of this is, you know, that this isn't like, if you don't say anything now, we don't, like, this is an ongoing conversation. And so we would really encourage you as you're thinking about something or you're on a site visit and you're seeing something in action that you let us know. Our EDs, myself, Janelle, and then we can plan accordingly. So appreciate your engagement tonight and the questions and I'll turn it back to you, Director Barros.
All right. Well, that is it for our agenda and it is 6:30. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good evening.